Call to order, the Gladstone Planning Commission Work Session, 525 Portland Avenue, Gladstone, Oregon. Today is Tuesday, December 18th, 2018, and this video will be online for anybody to review. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Langston?
Present.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Present.
Commissioner Malachi?
Here.
Commissioner Poole?
Here.
Commissioner Wentz?
Here.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Here.
Chair Rowlett?
Here.
Let's salute the flag.
Let's salute it to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Tonight, we're going to do a discussion, so it's a real informal meeting. And thanks, everybody, for coming. I see people that I know and recognize out there, that's great. Severely rent burden population discussion, and I guess we just start.
Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening, and thank you to the Planning Commission for letting you be the platform for this conversation. Couple of months ago, I got a letter in the mail that said, "Guess what? People can't afford to live in your town anymore." But I realized that there were many cities in the state of Oregon that also received that letter, and I'm referring to House Bill 4006, which designated Gladstone as being a severely rent-burdened population. So with that wonderful title, we have some requirements now. And tonight really is about having a conversation. Having a conversation with the Planning Commission, our elected officials, our people who live in our community and rent from our community and who work in our community. There are no answers tonight, but we have a couple of presentations that I think will be very thoughtful and innovative as we have a discussion. And this really is meant to be an informal time. I do also want to recognize that we have Mayor Stempel, Councilor Milch, Councilor Mercero, Councilor Tracy. Did I miss, did I get everybody there? And then also some special guests. I think I saw Jill walk in. Jill Smith is here. She's the Deputy Director from Clackamas County Health, Housing, and Human Services. We also have Terrell Anderson, who's the new Executive Director of Northwest Housing Alternatives. And is Clay here? There's Clay. Hello, thank you. He's the Associate Housing Director with Northwest Housing Alternatives. And then Julie Garver is here. She is with Innovating Housing, Housing Development Director. Is there anybody that I missed that would like to introduce themselves? If not, that's fine, but thank you for signing your sign-in sheet, because we are required to turn that information into the state. And so as I reiterated, we want to have a conversation. And on the back table tonight, for anybody that wants it, you have a summary of House Bill 4006, which talks about rent burden, housing affordability survey, a public meeting, and our production reporting requirements. We also, in the packet back there, have a copy of the Oregon Housing Planning Project Code Update, and it's an audit that the county and the city are engaging in. And our senior planner, Melissa Aaron, is going to talk to you about that a little bit, because I think this will set you at ease that Gladstone is on the right path. We're getting our own house in order, and we're doing our own housing audit. So we are going to know where our issues are and where we need to focus. And then we have something fun. We have clickers that we handed out to most of you. And we've put together 14 quick questions that we need input from you on to help us as we give focus to our elected officials in the next year on how they should be addressing affordable housing. And then we have two quick presentations from Innovated Housing and also Northwest Housing Alternatives. So with that... Basically, I'd like to let you know, cities with populations over 10,000 where greater than 25% of renter households pay more than 50% of monthly income on rent must hold one public meeting to discuss rent burden causes and potential solutions, and we must report meeting minutes and the attendees, and we must complete and submit a survey. Gladstone did partially submit a survey, and the other questions that we're going to ask you tonight are going to help us report the remainder of the questions on the survey. So what that means in Gladstone is our population is estimated at 11,850, and the state has given us a 34% that are severely rent-burdened. So out of 628 rent-burdened households, that's what comes to the 34%. Students were factored into this total, and the gross rent as a percentage of household income was factored in the past 12 months.
Hey, Jackie, before you go on, I'd like to make sure this is clear for everybody, too. We're not talking about severely owner-burdened, just for renters.
That is correct. Thank you for that clarification. The intent of HB 4006 was to increase local awareness of rent burden causes and potential solutions in an effort to encourage local jurisdictions, which is us, to take steps or to communicate support on how we should be addressing severely rent-burdened populations in our community. We also need to collect housing-related information, which I alluded that Melissa will touch on. And there is also funding available to assist cities in housing planning efforts. And I believe currently, the state has approximately $1.73 million in technical assistance. And you will hear that our technical assistance that we're receiving is grant-funded on our housing update as well. The requirements of the public meeting, you can take it within another meeting, which is why we chose the Planning Commission. It requires specific invitations, which means representation from local housing providers and service providers. And Jill was very helpful with providing that information. And we sent over, I believe, 35 individual contacts to renters that we were aware of in the community. We also sent out to EMO Second Home, Northwest Family Services, Clackamas County Social Services, Clackamas Women's Services, Northwest Housing Alternatives, the Inn. And then, of course, we also invited the school district so that those policymakers could be aware of the issues that we are dealing with in our jurisdictions. The items that we must discuss tonight are the barriers that you see in us being able to reduce rent burden conditions and some possible solutions. So even though we may not have all of the answers tonight, we are certainly going to have some things to think about and some conversations that we, as staff, need to start communicating to our elected officials on where their focus needs to be. So I believe I'm going to have Melissa give you an overview on the audits that we will be going through.
Hi, everyone. Melissa Aaron's here, Senior Planner for the city. So there's kind of two different projects that are tracking together that are funded from the state grant associated kind of with this whole housing information and outreach effort. One is the county-wide housing needs analysis. So the intent of that is to gather data to help inform policymaking for alleviating barriers to housing and all the strategies Jackie was just touching on a bit ago. So the housing needs analysis is being handled by a county kind of collaboration of staff as well as other cities that are involved. I think Canby, Westland, Lake Oswego, and a few others are kind of involved in that effort to hopefully get the same type of data to inform their code updates or changes to address this issue. So we are involved kind of on the periphery with that effort. They've been reaching out to us by, I mean, the consultant, has been reaching out to us to get our take on the data they're using, to make sure that it's a valid source of data. The last I heard, they're using metro housing data, which kind of vetted, and it sounds like it would be a pretty logical source of information. So the results of that housing needs analysis, which there's going to be an appendix specific to Gladstone, are expected in June of next year, I believe. So that is kind of our data, would be our data source to help inform policymaking. Another effort that Jackie has mentioned is the code audit. So a few months ago, DLCD had reached out to us and let us know that we were, had been identified as a rent-and-burden community, and we were a good candidate for this grant. It's audit, code audit. So they go through kind of your residential zoning code sections, design standards, building standards, in the zoning title of the municipal code, and identify where it could be improved, streamlined, et cetera, cleaned up, to help facilitate housing in the city and the type of housing that's appropriate for the city. And we went through the proposal here for the RFP, for the consultant, and have, I think, a really good contract in the end that puts a lot of the work on the consultant that the state selected, which is Seagull Planning Services. We had our first kickoff meeting with them two weeks ago. They seem really on the ball and ready to get started. They have a lot of good work experience with this type of thing. We will be project-managing from a planning staff standpoint, so overseeing what they're doing. We made sure to coordinate with DLCD to have as much public involvement opportunities as we could as part of the code audit process to get the public and the community's input and feedback. Ultimately, it's going to be guiding whatever code changes occur, so we want to get information and kind of correspondence started with the community early on. So there's going to be two public stakeholder meetings scheduled as part of the, that are kind of budgeted in the roles of the consultant, as well as advisory committee meetings. So we'll be looking at a stakeholder list and kind of setting up advisory committee to give feedback and kind of talk more technical details about code questions before they provide the final code audit deliverable. Looks like they're scheduled to do that the end of March 2019. Following that, there would be Planning Commission, City Council work sessions in April, May, kind of, this is a rough timeline, of next year. So that would give us a lot to talk about and work from. But if you're interested in being involved in the public kind of stakeholder process or the advisory committee, please contact, feel free to contact me, and I can kind of put you in touch with the consultant. Or at a minimum, we could get you on the mailing list just to be involved with that process as it's going forward.
I think that audit's going to be key for Gladstone in the next month to understand what changes we should be doing to our code. That will help us considerably. So with that, before we do our presentations, let's see what you guys think about on some of these questions that will help us. So you have a clicker, correct?
We checked the batteries, and Haley is going to pull up a question. Okay. So please rate your level of agreement or disagreement with the following statements. You're all are tied to your perception. So there is no right or wrong here. This is your perception of the housing needs in our city.
Did everyone get clickers?
Did everybody get clickers?
Anybody needs to move around or anything, please do.
Yes, this is very informal. And obviously, number one is on your clicker, one, two, three, four, five, how they are. So if you guys could put in, are you rate?
There is a lack of market-rate rental units. Remember, market rate are with no rent restrictions. Market rate means no rent restrictions. And Haley will be able to tell pretty much when everyone has submitted. Lot of disagrees on that one.
Some majority disagrees. So in other words, everybody thinks that we have enough market-rate rental units in Gladstone. Market rates, what people can afford, I guess. But maybe not. Market rate means, you know, if you live in Westland, you pay two grand a month. Gladstone's probably 1,500.
Are you questioning what the answers are by the people? Is that what you're doing, Randy?
Well, I just, you know, I'm wondering if the question is...
It's a little confusing.
Maybe I don't understand it.
Well, these are the questions submitted by the state for us to answer, and as staff, we did not feel we were qualified. So we said, "Let's ask the community what they think." So again, there's no right or wrong. We're just trying to gather a consensus. There is a lack of regulated affordable renting units. Regulated affordable means it is a residential unit subject to a regulatory agreement that runs with the land and that requires affordability for an established income level for a defined period of time. There is, there is a lack of market-rate rental units that are family-sized. There is a lack of regulated affordable rental units that are family-sized. How people get in the hang of it? Great. There is a lack of units that are manufactured homes. There is a lack of emergency shelters for homeless. Concentrated poverty is a problem, which is a clustering of locations where 20% to 40% or more of residents live below the poverty threshold. On this next series, the last series, please indicate the extent to which you perceive the following to be a barrier to reducing rent burden in your city. Okay. Lack of economic opportunity, wages are too low, and are too few jobs to support housing costs. Lack of affordable housing units. Lack of funding for development of new affordable housing units. Lack of affordable housing development in high-opportunity areas. I don't have a state definition of that, no.
Probably be, be like, Intel or Nike or something.
Lack of housing vouchers. Lack of family-sized affordable housing units. Increasing demand for affordable housing units. Thank you for participating. As a staff, you can see how it would be difficult for one of us to answer when we have Gladstone, because there are very subjective questions. And I think that's why we need to have a competition. So with that, I think Clay or Terrell, would you like to come up for a few minutes or five? And please feel free to raise your hand if you have questions at any time.
Where would you like them?
Here's fine. I know, we're kind of addressing everybody, so that's fine right there.
And actually, how many residents do you have in your facility?
You guys are Northwest Housing Alternatives?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
This is Terrell Anderson. I'm the Executive Director at Northwest Housing Alternatives. Clayton is one of our housing developers. He's working on a project right here in the community at the moment. So just a quick overview of Northwest Housing Alternatives. We've been operating from our campus in downtown Milwaukee since 1982, founded here in Clackamas County by former Clackamas County employees and community members to address affordable housing issues, not just in Clackamas County, but start here, statewide. Also to operate the Annie Ross House, which many of you have encountered. It's a family settlement for families. It's currently closed, because our whole campus is under redevelopment and construction right now. Fun to drive by and see the, see the new facilities go up. And we're very excited that we'll have the new Annie Ross House that will serve eight families at a time, 28 units of family-sized affordable housing. And then our new, our public world headquarters, our new office building on the campus as well, all of our campus there. We expect to move back about this time next year. We receive funding from all types of funding sources, like Jill Smith is here from the county. And we need to recognize Jill and the county's long, long, long-time support, particularly for the Annie Ross House and the different housing development projects that he's done in Clackamas County throughout the years. I've been with the organization now for just about 90 days, but my whole career has been here in Oregon, primarily in the Portland metropolitan area, working in the affordable housing industry. I worked at the City of Portland Bureau of Housing and Community Development. I was the Executive Director of the Clackamas Housing Authority for about six years, most recently at Cafeteries and Parrot House Housing. And now 90 days at Northwest Housing Alternatives. It's an exciting time at Northwest Housing Alternatives, you know. We can share down the road about our pipeline, work we're doing in Clackamas and around the state. But I think it's great that you all are hosting this meeting yet, have to. This could have been just a public meeting and three people show up. And I think it's wonderful that the Planning Commission decided to host this, and we've got great participation from City Council and the rest of you as well. For us, this is our mission, this is what we do. We're a nonprofit housing developer and owner. We have about 1,800 units in our portfolio around the state, primarily serving seniors and families. And we have a portfolio of group homes around the state that we partner with service providers that we have people with health known to still do stuff. In addition to the Annie Ross House, we also run homeless prevention programs and rapid rehousing programs right here in Clackamas County. It's been supported strong by Clackamas County. Affordable housing is a very deep and rich topic, especially when we talk about rent burden. And we're not, we're going to scratch the surface today, you know, this evening in our two-hour time limit together. One of the things that I think we recognize by doing the surveys is that we don't all have the same definitions or understanding of the definitions or even the data. And so you use the term "subjective." I think it shows a lot of our differences. You know, we haven't seen the data, right? The market data, the real market rate versus what's affordable for Gladstone. There's several sources that do that for Clackamas counties and for counties around the state. I brought a little piece from what's called the Housing Alliance. I don't know if you all have seen this piece, but it starts to get at the data in a kind of a graphic way that we can begin to understand rent burden. So market rents are typically, what does the market bear? If you own a house or a duplex and you wanted to rent it, what could you get in the market right now? And that will always fluctuate, right? It depends. Restricted rent, that's what we do all day long. That's our portfolio, and those rents are determined when we develop or acquire a property, and we pull together all kinds of different funding sources to do that, whether they're federal tax credits or federal home fund. Maybe it's bond money coming our way, as you're all aware, the municipal bond is playing. We start to layer in all of these different subsidies, press our rents down. So the more subsidies we can layer in, the lower rents are that we can charge. And so we're always in, trying to push those rents as low as we can. It just depends on that capital stack and how many resources we can bring into it. I brought another graphic that just tried to get at that simple illustration just a little bit. We could spend more time with that if you'd like. In terms of need, I think part of your survey will get at that more specifically, right? That's the data that you'll be looking for. One of the things that we really focus on are seniors and families. And, you know, I don't know if you're following some of the data or headline recently that the number of homeless kids in our schools around the state has dropped. That's good news. The bad news is it just dropped from 23,000 to 21,000. So around the state of Oregon, 21,000 kids in our schools are homeless. Now, if they were to find that statistic for Gladstone, do you know it?
Well, you know, I have a question about that, because from personal experience, I know some of those kids are homeless because they're counted that way, because they like to do what they call couch surfing. So they don't like to stay at home and follow the rules. So they have a network of places where they stack out. And, you know, that's by choice, and you can't force anybody, even if they're a minor, to do what you want them to do. I mean, there's, you know, you just can't. So, you know, I don't know that they're really in big trouble if you know where they're at, and they're doing the couch surfing thing, but they are counted as homeless.
Yeah. And I don't know how many of the 58 kids in Gladstone, Gladstone, will just sort of be counted like that. I know that, you know, we... I know that, you know, we see homeless families with kids coming through our shelter on a regular basis. Sometimes they're couch surfing before they become homeless. Sometimes they're couch surfing, and I'm talking about the families, not just the kids, but the families. The kids are with the fam, with an adult when they come to our shelter. Couch surfing usually for the family is a last resort effort. And then what we experience is, you know, the host family, you know, is saying, we've had enough. You know, we just can't, we can't go on anymore with you and the kids here. We typically see them at that point in our shelter. And that's when we engage them in case management to help them along the way. But the point is somehow there's fifty-eight homeless kids in the Gladstone School District. I think it was under three percent of the students in the School District. So, rent burden hits low-income families in a harder way than it hits, you know, those of us who earn more higher incomes. I think a senior on Social Security benefit right now is just nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month, Social Security. A one-bedroom apartment in Gladstone rents for...
Twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars. That's a rough-ass estimate.
So actually, I looked it up yesterday.
Of course you did.
I looked at rent.com, rentals.com, Zillow, and apartments.com. And in Gladstone, they're ranging anywhere from five-sixty a month to eight thousand a month.
Is that for home or an apartment?
That's for renting. I didn't, it didn't specify what kind of rental.
Right. So that's probably that high end is a nice big house. And probably that low end is a studio.
Or a room in someone's house.
I think a one-bedroom is probably eight or nine hundred, isn't it, in this area?
That's what I would've said, right? And so if your monthly income from Social Security is nine-fifty and your rent is nine-hundred, you got fifty bucks to make it through the rest of the month to feed yourself and pay your light bill. So that's severely rent burden, for example. And we typically talk about that in terms of income ranges. And so you're here thirty percent median family income, fifty percent median family income, fifty percent, eighty percent. There are charts available that tell us those incomes. For example, thirty percent median family income for a one-person household is seventeen thousand, one hundred dollars per year. You can really start to understand, you know, that relationship between rent and income to identify rent burden for the community. This sheet is off of the Portland Housing Bureau website. It's what is published by HUD for the Portland Metro Municipal Area. Still, I have the Housing Authority and the county and some things. There's just lots to talk about. Clayton is going to tell you about our portfolio that we have in Clackamas County, the income levels of the average income level of the residents that we serve. And we're available for any questions. I don't, you know, I don't want to ramble too much because there, again, I don't know what direction we need to go or want to go tonight, but it's very deep and very rich. We have some of the answers in terms of how to build affordable housing, how to partner with you as a community to build affordable housing. We've done that again for the last twenty years around the state. And happy to be here and please consider us a partner in any endeavor. Discussion, discovery, data, and most important, building more affordable housing.
All right. I want to start off by kind of passing out a little, we have our Clackamas County...
Welcome back.
Yeah, I know. You guys don't mind and kind of sharing?
Sure.
So, I was most recently here in regards to our River Glen Apartments, which are actually just down the street on Risenly Avenue. Existing forty-four units of affordable housing. Incomes there range anywhere from, you know, on down to twenty, thirty percent, only way up to sixty percent. Area median income. We have forty-four units out there, a hundred and eighteen people on the property, I believe. And right now, we're actually going through the final steps of securing funding to a big rehab of the whole project. And one of the questions that kind of caught my eye in that survey was availability of funding for affordable housing. And, you know, as a developer and somebody who is constantly going out there to get funding for these projects, I was almost screaming in the back, strongly agree that this is an extreme barrier to affordable housing. You know, I would say most of our work is spent gathering up a plethora of funding sources for projects happening. Because unlike a market rate project where you've got this large cushion of income that can pay, you know, a large mortgage, pay your bills, your operating expenses, affordable housing doesn't have that same income thing. We are, from, you know, an operations perspective, just getting by. And that's with taking, you know, being able to use grants, tax credit funding, a lot of other funding sources. So you might have your average market rate apartment is going to be funded by, let's say, some equity investors and, you know, folks that have some money around to develop the project. And then one large loan, maybe a construction loan and a permanent loan. Our typical project is ranging from, let's say, four to twelve different sources of funding. Because as a nonprofit, we don't have big equity investors that come out of the woodwork. We're relying on a lot of those local, state, and federal funds to make that project happen. And therefore, it takes a lot longer to actually develop affordable housing. There's a lot more that goes into it. And I think just as an example with the River Glen Project, this rehab got completed actually back in early twenty-seventeen. And began conversations with HUD in the HUD Office in San Francisco about funding for that. And it's taken, it's actually, I haven't even closed on that loan yet. It's going to be coming up in January most likely. And so it's taken two years to secure funding for just a substantial rehab that's not even, you know, new construction, adding units. You know, we're just really trying to preserve and protect before the housing is already there. And so that's just a little slice into kind of the challenges that, you know, nationwide affordable housing faces in that it's not, it's not an easy thing to do and it's not an easy thing to create. So I think, you know, anything that, you know, especially local governments, we've gotten a huge amount of help from Melissa up at the county in this project. So, you know, anything that, you know, local governments can do to, you know, help with funding, help with finding sites to build on, all of those are incredibly important because each one of those little victories and, you know, little pushes along the way really do help a project get built. Because we're, you know, having to gather together all these different funding sources, there are so many times where, you know, I think on a daily basis where you get a phone call or email that, you know, you're like, ooh, this is going to kill this project. Like, we might not be able to provide affordable housing for this project. And a lot of the time, you know, somebody at the local level steps forward and they will kind of bring it along. So, you know, kind of pulling back from River Glen a little bit, looking at the county and this paper is kind of going around. We have a total of eight properties. They're kind of ranging from workforce housing, which is either singles, couples, or small families that are in, in the workforce, and also senior housing. Trel kind of touched on, you know, seniors having fixed, you know, very low incomes. And they literally have no other option. Either, you know, our senior properties or other senior properties in the county or homeless. They don't have the, you know, ability to work anymore, to, you know, bring their income up in any way. So those are really crucial properties to have out there as a resource. And then obviously, our family properties are in areas, we actually have two in Lake Oswego, which are incredibly important for those that are working in and serving that community, but who gets the rice out of that community, you know, basically any market rate apartment there. And then, you know, and I think as far, as, you know, we're looking, you know, to constantly, you know, build new units, we've actually got a developed pipeline right now that's out to twenty-twenty-two, I believe, with over eight hundred units for us as an organization. And that's all across the state. You know, we're constantly looking forward and trying to find new opportunities to build because the housing shortage is going to continue. It's not going away. And so as a developer, I think it's really important to, you know, look for, find opportunities within the community that, you know, especially Gladstone, has the flexibility to make those opportunities happen. Can I just, why don't we just stop there and end discussion, questions?
I actually have a question for you, Clay. So I actually really appreciate that you've got the rent burden listed for each property.
Yeah.
So the two on the front page from Wilsonville, do you know why the average rent burden on those properties are so much higher than the others?
So, those are two family properties. And if I'm remembering right... So those are homes, CDV, four-rooms. So, you know, obviously, some of the income structure there is going to be lower-income families. And, you know, so even with an apartment that's affordable for somebody at, let's say, sixty percent or thirty percent, you know, somebody may not, you know, obviously, your income is not going to match that exact threshold.
Sure. No, I understood that. I was just wondering, was there anything about the way it was built or the financing or anything like that that impacted the cost to the residents or anything like that?
I have an answer for you for that tonight. First, if you go back and look at it, Clay's been on, five or nine days in, you're about a hundred and twenty days in.
Yeah.
So we still have that on the...
Sure.
...part of it, but having to get back to it.
Yeah, and I see that some of the others, like the one locally, has much lower numbers. I'm just wondering, like, if a new building was going to be built, for example, if there are certain things we can see from these that would indicate whether something was going to be better or worse for the residents down the road?
Right. The way I would respond to that is that handout that I did with the two side-by-sides.
Yeah.
So the one with all the funding sources layered into it, the more funding sources you layer in, the lower the rents are going to be and the less rent burden people will be. And so it could be that those two properties in Wilsonville didn't get all the layering in that we wanted.
Just the rents are higher.
Rents floored up a little bit, probably. That's my sense of it. And so if we're doing a new project here in Gladstone, you know, we want to work with you to layer in as many of, you know, funding, different funding sources as possible. And the more we can bring to the table, the more...
Thank you.
I've got something. One of the funding sources, kind of in a roundabout way, is the tax credits and building residences that are obviously much more energy efficient. And we certainly don't have time to get too deep into that, but are you seeing more and more avenues there? Because I've got a neighbor who's home all the time. She's elderly. I go over there. It's seventy-five degrees in there. And her electric bill is two-hundred-and-seventy dollars a month, and she doesn't cook. So is there going to be more and more ways of, you know, you're justifying by reducing maintenance and reducing energy bills, things like that? Are we going to see more of that?
I'll give you a global answer, and Clayton's got a good technical sense of this key. Global answer is yes. And green building standards and energy efficiency, it's up in the industry. It's always coming up with research. We're kind of stuck in a place, you've probably seen discussion about, you know, building affordable housing is way too expensive. Why is building affordable housing so expensive? Building to energy efficiency adds to that expense, for example. And so we're kind of stuck in a place where, yes, we want to build energy-efficient units, you know, units that are heat, 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 and voltage, high insulation ratings and all of that. And it starts to add to the cost to build those units. There's some of the...
Are there additional grants when you do it?
There are. There's the little tax credits, they aren't, they don't offset the full expense.
So I'm talking about the tax credits from the state, but I mean, are there other grants available? Maybe from the manufacturers or things like that?
There's some rebates, you know, maybe some window rebates.
Gotcha.
Like that, because there aren't these grant specifics for energy efficiency.
Yeah. And so I think, you know, as an organization, any new construction we're doing, I don't know if you're familiar at all with the Earth Advantage standard, similar to LEED or Green Start. Any new construction we're doing, we're building an Earth Advantage goal, just as a standard. And, you know, and I think one of the things, too, is that we don't actually shoot for getting a plaque on the building. We shoot for putting that money into actual energy retrofit. So that's, you know, that's one aspect. And then we kind of tailor any energy efficiency upgrades in projects to be intrinsic to the building. So not, you don't need user input. You don't need somebody to turn the thermostat down to regulate, you know, the, how long the shower they're taking. We really try and build those measures into a building. And, you know, even at a property that we're, you know, rehabbing is River Glen, we're going to be increasing the amount of insulation in the exterior of the building. Even if that building was built in nineteen-seventy and having seen that work done. So that's going to be a huge benefit for us, increasing insulation in the attic, adding LED light fixtures. So all these things that, you know, are not like, it's not as sexy as a solar panel in the building, but it really builds a long way in making a building that's getting more efficient.
Yeah, I spent a long time with energy upgrades and ADA and heating and cooling. So I'm no longer doing it, but it was really dramatically changing eight or ten years ago. And I'm just seeing more and more viability and keeping energy costs down because nowhere in any of those questions was the question, are energy costs making housing unaffordable? So there's that whole piece of it out there. Thank you.
Well, California just passed a law that's going to be required on all new buildings.
All right.
Yeah.
Do you guys look for properties, I mean, what size properties do you look for? Like, say, if the apartment's over on Clarinet and ninety-nine went for sale, I think it's probably fifty or so units over there. Is that the kind of buildings you look to buy as well? Do you have cash that you can just make cash offers or...
I think the suitcase is full.
So we're driven a lot by the funding sources that are available. And they're usually public funds in some form or fashion, whether that's the Federal Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program or the Metro Bond Funds that are going to start flowing through Clackamas County and all of that. They all have kind of metrics that we need to meet, whether that be target population, geographic population, cost per unit metrics. Some sources just want to fund new construction and won't fund after rehabs, like the LIFT program at the State of Oregon. So if we're kind of working on our pipeline, whether it's buy a site, build new, or acquire existing properties, we're looking at it from the lens of how can we get this thing financed and funded in its permanency, you know, within about a two- or three-year window. Acquiring a fifty-unit apartment in the market, we wouldn't, we might tie up that property for a period of time so that we can go chase those funding sources. But I don't think we'd be interested in anything less than about fifty units existing for acquisition. We are interested in smaller unit production projects. For example, our Pleasant Avenue project in Oregon City is twenty-four units, veteran families.
You're building that now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, as far as, you know, land, anything from a half acre to up to three acres, I think the River Glen site is two or four or five, you know?
I don't remember, but that sounds right.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think anything in that range for new construction. And, yeah, and like Trel...
And, yeah, and like Phil mentioned, I think we're really, you know, looking at kind of making different models to serve different groups. So like with our project in Oregon City, we're building that, you know, to really make a test model for what veteran housing could look like in smaller communities. And one that we can hopefully use and do today. So with, you know, the funding sources, with the size of the site, with the population, that we can go around and build something similar. And that really, every time we can reproduce something and not have to make something brand new, our unit costs keep going down.
Right.
So.
Good.
In terms of buying large properties like that, we usually, we rarely find an owner that can be patient with us through that two-year process to line up all of those funds. And if the owner is willing, of course, they're going to, you know, it's going to cost us a lot of money along that way.
Well, that's what I was kind of asking about the cash thing, because if you have cash, it's always, you know, cash does wonders when you're trying to buy a property.
We have, we have some cash, and, you know, we, I think we maybe want to spend that on acquiring a piece of dirt.
Okay.
Instead of having it spring out, you know, in speculation for a couple of years.
I've got another, just, a question.
What does it cost to develop housing? What are your development costs? What would your rehab at River Glen have to cost? So our rehab at River Glen, I'm going to have on that really quick. Our, you know, our typical per unit cost, you know, on the low end is running in the, let's say, the low two hundred thousand a unit range. And, you know, just depending on where the site is and where we can get funding.
Unit sizes.
Yeah, unit sizes and all that. So, you know, it can vary around there. Just for the rehab project at River Glen, we're looking at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a unit. So it's a pretty expensive rehab, but, but, yeah, it's not, it's not cheap up there.
When you're talking about per unit, are you talking about the one bedroom or family, family size units?
Just across the board.
Okay.
But I think, you know, when we-
But that is per unit, per apartment?
Yeah, and then we can drill down into a specific property, you know, like our, our veterans' project in Oregon City is, is one and two bedrooms out there. So, yeah, we can kind of drill down into that, or unit, per unit.
Part of the cost that you factor in for that is relocating residents and doing services for them and stuff like that, so it's not all just going to Home Depot.
Yeah, yeah.
And buying a pile of stuff.
Right.
I mean, if there's existing buildings that were demolished.
So that one, Glen Oaks, I know you guys are going to put people up in hotels if needed and whatnot.
And that's actually a federal requirement.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Thank you both for coming. Should we go ahead and allow Julie time to do her presentation as well?
Sorry.
No, that's fine. Good question.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
If anybody out there has questions, too, just stand up or just raise your hand or whatever.
I'll take questions.
Okay.
Well, thank you for being nice to be here when you choose our program by, um, how to develop the director of innovative housing. I've been with innovative housing for about fourteen years, and innovative housing has, has been in, you know, Portland area since nineteen eighty-four. And so we have about eight hundred and ninety units in the metro area, we're going to be adding a hundred and fifty units for that. This year, we have a couple of projects that are going to be finished, and we are a long-term owner of property, and so we build and we build properties, and we all live for the long term. And so we're in with communities, working together to build housing that fits the community. We provide resident services, and, and that's great because those staff are onsite, on, at the apartment complexes, and they're really working with families to provide housing facilities. So it's just because a family gets housing, doesn't mean that they can always make it worth to stay in the housing. There are issues that come up, you know, having staff onsite there to not only help them stay in housing, but help them take the next steps in their lives, which is what I really like about our company.
So you have onsite everywhere at all your properties?
We do, yeah.
Good.
And so it's, and it's, and we, our properties really vary. So we, we have housing for individuals, we, you know, in specific locations, we have housing for people experiencing chaos. We have family housing, we have for seniors, we have housing for people with physical disabilities. So there's a real broad range. This slide, there is a lot of information on it, but I just kind of wanted to give you an idea. You're talking about rent levels, and, and Phil was talking a little bit about some of the, in affordable housing, it means that it's regulated, and people have to income qualify to live there. So if you want an expensive place to live and, you know, make a high income, you can't live in a housing. It really is regulated to make sure that folks earning lower incomes can access a lower rent. And so that's a protection. You know, we're, we're getting the benefits to people that need them. And affordable housing, and the definition is, but it's subsidized to a company, right? We just don't go out there alone and build it. So we're talking about the numerous funding sources we have. Well, those funding sources are money from the federal government, from the state government, from local government. So it's subsidized. And that's, that's the way that we can build it, because market rate developers have a hard time building lower rent housing options, and that's why we don't have a lot of affordable housing in the community. And so this kind of gives you an idea of what people at those different levels are making. I saw the family in four, because it's a major metric. I happened to look at Craig's list, within two miles of Gladstone, a few were available, and two-bedroom apartments in four is with, the lowest rent I could find was eleven ninety-five. And then they ranged both way up to about sixteen hundred, seventeen hundred. So that was the range, of course, there are outliers, you know, the big rents out there. But that was most of it. And so you can see the rents here are, you know, are below that. Most of our units are the thirty and fifty and sixty percent units, and so they are below what the market is, is charging. And then this bottom slide is just, it's kind of interesting to see, these are current jobs that I took off of Craig's list last night. It's kind of interesting to see what jobs are open out there, what people are earning. And so this is the reason why it's hard for people to find housing, is because you can see what they're making doesn't really line up with, you know, what this income level or the eighty percent income level or higher. You know, these folks, in order to get an apartment they can afford, they need those lower rent levels. And we just don't have them in the community. I wanted to take a minute here and ask people, how many people in your lifetime have ever lived in a property? Okay, almost everybody in the room. And how many people, when they lived in their apartment, liked it?
At the time, it was fine.
A few left, but some liked it, that's really-
I was the manager.
Okay.
I was, too.
I'm not going to cover a word. So I wanted to give you a little bit of idea of where we're located. We haven't gotten a chance to build a property in Gladstone yet. I am really hoping for that because I really like the community, and I live not too far from here down the road in Milwaukee. So that would be, that would be nice. So we've built in a lot of communities surrounding the Portland area. We have properties in Troutdale, and Freshem, and Blowa. We built a property in Alden, Oregon, and we're just starting to work with Lincoln City, we're building, we're building apartments there, an old building we have in Astoria, Oregon. And so we're starting to ranch out a little, because we would like a little more geographic by our city. And we found that working with individual communities is really rewarding to us. In France, we had an Alden, it was really great. And so we'd like to, you know, we'd like to start getting out into communities more around the state, especially in the IHI corridor and around the Portland metro area. And you can see that the properties really vary between the top ones are new construction and the bottom ones are historic properties. Some of those had apartments in them already, but some, like this Aricent Creek building, there's a big vacant empty building, and we created a apartment within it. And so we were adding new units, but we were doing it in kind of a creative way with the old buildings, that kind of like the old buildings, personal ones, because they have a lot of history. And trying to be able to reuse them, right? Recycling or using it in a big way. And then, so I wanted to talk about a little bit of, you know, what are the possibilities? And I just wanted to talk about the differences in apartments that so many of you live in apartments, you might see something upstairs that is similar to what you lived in, you know, originally. These are very different, and they're all around the Portland area, they're all IHI properties. This is the Alden property here. And that one, I think, was particularly gratifying because we did a, we did a design survey with the Alden community for that one, because Alden happens to have the highest concentration of historic buildings of any city in the west. So that's how there's a commercial building for everything, but that's kind of interesting. And so they wanted housing that really fit sort of the nature of their community. So their top series was designed up in River Glen, which has our housing stock and energy efficiency. And so we really, you know, the design that was chosen really lined up with those. We did a thing called a visual sampling survey, and so we have fifty slides, and we did paper, your clickers are a lot nicer, maybe it's a clicker now, but we did paper correspondence. And so you go through the slides of these different building sites, and people vote, you know, one, two, five, what they liked of that. And then in real time, at the end of the meeting, you tally everything up, and then you put, you know, your top two slides on the screen of how these properties look. And this one came in very close to their top picture of really what they wanted. And so that's the fun about working with a community, to try to align what type of housing you have with what community would like. And so these are not our properties, but these are just other examples. And, you know, for, for Gladstone, I've been walking around the community and looking at it, and there's a lot of different opportunities. The storefront buildings here are kind of interesting for the range three out here. And, you know, they'd have to be substantially done, but they have the ability to add in some retail and some commercial space and more, and, and then have housing above. So that could be a store on the bottom level, it could be a library on the bottom level, it could be offices, it could be a lot of different things. But we like to do mixed use. We've done quite a bit of mixed use over our different properties, and the commercial portion kind of helps to support the residential portion. And we do like this, we do, we do, we do all, we also like to mix the income within each property. So most of our properties are not all, they're all, or not all, let's pick a high workforce, they're mixed, you know, all of those we want, and it just helps support the building if you do it that way. So one other thing that I wanted to talk about for Gladstone with the question of growing units, and I know you guys have been chatting about this a little bit, but, and we, in innovative housing, those are special growing units, but I personally, we love them, and they're a really nice affordable housing product that regular people can do. You know, this affordable stuff that we often talking about, that takes a nonprofit or somebody comes out and they're like, oh, just, it is super complex, you have a bunch of lawyers and a bunch of attorneys, and it's expensive, there's a, you know, you spend thousands of dollars a year, that's us, you know, they're pretty consistent across the agencies. But ADUs, regular folks, you know, marketing people can do. And they're less expensive, they're affordable, and they're smaller. You know, they're tucked in to available land, they're not buying new land to put ADUs on, and so they have this natural affordability to do that. They're also nice, you can see the first step. So affordable housing like ours, you could sell twelve, fifteen units, sixteen units, that's left, too. People do like to have that because we hire folks who manage, our managers on site, we need to spread those costs, we'll be unit. We could do it in a couple buildings, like they were talking about, some places are very young, they're kind of close to one another, so you could share a manager and make that work. So we need scale. We need scale to accommodate efficiently. You know, an ADU, the landlord's right there on the same property. You know, I personally have two ADUs, and in two different houses, and it's, it's been really nice for me, I've been living most of my life, and I have extra income. And so I usually live in the unit, you know, the other unit. I've lived in my apartment, and I've lived in the house, and I went back to school and, you know, bring all this stuff, but, but the units really serve me, and it's going to help me in different ways. And that's a nice thing about them, is they can add income for regular folks to try and keep their house. And so I just wanted to talk about these a little bit. You can tell what this is, right? What it is, what it used to be?
Garage.
Garage, right? This is neat because it's a little kind of cluster. This is the main house, this is an artist studio, and that's the ADU. That's a freestanding backyard ADU. This house has three units in it. You can see this unit above the garage, it's a one bedroom, it has a little door, entry door here. This is the main house, and so it, you know, it's a three-bedroom, two-bath house. And then there's a little ramp, it just has a daylight basement, and so the third unit is a one-bedroom daylight basement. This house, old house, right? And then along the side, these folks kind of dug down, and they have a little ramp that goes down towards daylight basement and back house. But if you, you know, if you take a quick look at those two houses, you wouldn't really know, you know, that they have ADUs in them, but that's supporting income for the folks, and they're smaller units, and so they're affordable. This lower unit rents for eight ninety-five, and this upper unit rents for seven ninety-five. And they're both one bedroom. So these, this is all one property, and I liked this one, I wanted to show you this because it's really interesting what you see when you look at the property. So what was the garage? So there's the main house, and so you're walking down a little path to get to the garage, to get to the ADU. Here's what it looks like from the side in the yard. There's the side, you can see the house, and then there's the inside. Isn't that quaint? When I lived in a apartment, me and I mustn't live in a place like that. It just has the quaintness, and that's another thing about ADUs, is that you can get a certain feeling and style and living that you really can't do in an apartment. You know, a apartment's great, I build apartments, but this has a certain quaintness about it, a certain quality, like, it's different than apartments. And what size is not so in affordable housing? You know, we, if, if I could choose what project I'd build, I'd build one that was different every time, because people have different needs. So I just want to run through these slides pretty quickly. This is talking a little bit more about our Alden apartment project. It has a lot of different sizes of units, one, two, three, four, there's about, about two acres of land, seventy-eight parking spaces, and that was a big one. I noticed in some of the materials you have on the back, it says, reducing the number of parking spaces for development can be an important incentive, and that's an important incentive for us, too, because if we had had to build more parking spaces, we could not have built the same area. And so it's really kind of a trade-off. Do you want to build more space for cars, or do you want to build more space for people? And it has to be balanced, right? And there has to be balance, and you have to figure out what it is for your community. But it's, it's an important part of it. So this is something that I think that Gladstone should really think about, is what amenities you'd like to get for the public with your affordable housing project? There's a lot of times we can do things in a community, whether it's build a retail space, or have a community space that has an art gallery, or build a public path that goes through the property, and you'd like to tap there anyway. So why don't you make it open for the public, make it an amenity for people? And so as you're going through your process, and maybe you find some land that you want to offer out, you know, for affordable housing developer to build on, say, hey, what can you do for us? What can, what can this project provide in addition to affordable housing? Let us give you a little few more pictures. We were able to put a community garden in this spot for residents, and have got two little charcoal barbecue grills, some tubs, and some garden boxes, and we were able to do that because the- And we were able to do that because the, the, we reduced our number of parking spaces by ten. And so we took those ten parking spaces and made community blood out of it, and it gives a lot of use. This shows you the funding sources, and, and it would have ten, so, but I put everything into other, that we call. So we had a weatherization grant from the state for this project, and we have a little grant here and a little grant there. But most of it, as you can see, was below income tax credit. And the city of Albany has an urban renewal area, and they contributed one point of funding to the project. That city is now, they started to use it as a mountain. And this was a problem site, they really needed it to develop, and they wanted to do housing. And it was with their two R A, and they said, hey, this has been a chronic problem site for fifteen years, we're to it. And I really thoroughly respect them. And they steered us to it, they said, hey, we want you to do something about this. We negotiated with the seller, and, and we worked together to get it done. So this gives you a little idea of if affordable housing were to come to Gladstone and build an apartment building, how would we fund it? And you heard a little bit about the Metro Bonds funding. So that's a really important tool right now that we have in communities. And there's going to be shares that get allocated, do we know yet? No, just getting allocated?
Yeah, Quaker County was, yeah, about twenty-one percent, I think it's twenty, twenty-eight, it's a hundred and sixteen million that have to go to develop, acquire, and rehab houses, that's a policy.
So that's a really good piece of funding. And even with that, we'll still combine it, because if you combine it with the other pieces of funding, it goes a lot harder. And so one of the important bonds are valum measures on this, which are institutional limits, which allows us to combine public-private partnerships, I mean, low income tax credit with the bond funding. So that was such a, that would make it, which is exciting. Another option is the nine percent low income housing tax credit, that's how we did the Albany project. Those are super great, but super competitive. So you have to compete every time, and it increases local costs, we have, we have talked about, and they're very sore, but it's really, really hard to get right now. And you have to have a lot of those thirty different levels, which is great, but it means you have to get funding, and so if you're looking at some list or another funding source department with it, it just needs to take a little more time to, to put all those pieces together. And then we, we do have another option right now, these are just kind of like the top three, the top two choose right now. Four percent low income housing tax credits, which are non competitive, which is great, but they give you less money, and so you need a bigger gap. And so the list, you know, large, what they call list funds, local, innovation, local innovation, fast tax, and so the state's trying to get that money out there, you know, and evidence also that it's a bond. And so they're doing this, low income tax credit. And so that's a great opportunity to have too. And so they're on these sources, and I think they brought such a decline to sixty-nine each, that's part of the, of the project. And then just closing, affordable housing is a really great first thing. One of the things that we do is that you pray should people become evangelists for this, because, you know, sometimes aren't all someone else's affordable housing, because you have some dietary impact, you know, that's how it works, things are well, how it works well, you know, there are cars sitting on the street, there's a bad behavior, and surely things like that. And so we like to be evangelists for regular community, I am regular community, to go out and do the stuff, and walk around and talk with managers. A lot of our managers have been there for multiple years, a lot of the residents are long-term residents, we have residents that have lived in our country for fifteen, twenty years, or, you know, I used to work for in a little house. And so, so it's just nice to get a feel for what the properties are really like and what the people are like on holiday, because once you get a feel for that, then you can say, okay, I'd like to have something like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie, very much. It, I, I think what I picked up on is Julie's right, Gladstone is primed. And I think with our housing needs analysis that we're doing this next year, that's going to set the tone. We've heard a lot about ADUs, Gladstone doesn't have a lot of land for building, so redevelopment, we need to go up. I think you're going to start hearing those conversations. You have Oregon House Speaker that's talking about taking away single-family residential land and making everybody ten thousand population or more go up. So there's a lot of those conversations happening right now. But I, I do want to thank all of you, and Jill is going to come to, to the City Council in February to talk a little bit more about the Metro Bond Funds for participating. So was there any questions that anybody had? Yes, Counselor?
I guess what I, we pointed out, you raised the question at the beginning, this was about rent burdened housing, not older burdened. But I have to wonder whether, you know, the, the lack of options for people who want to buy is one of the things that contributes to, you know, you pointed out that everybody here probably at one time or other lived in an apartment, and most of us have been able to transition to a single-family home. But if, if you want, in Gladstone, we have two single-family home zones, R five and R seven point two, which means it's either a five thousand square foot lot with a, you know, the lawn you have to maintain and, and all the rest, and it, you know, a certain size home, or a seventy-two hundred square foot lot. And I think what's missing is an R two point four, something where a five thousand square foot lot could be, you know, divided into two smaller homes. Or a couple lots together could become a cottage cluster of homes around, surrounding a, a central shared yard for the people that want to live in an eight or nine hundred square foot home and would be happy to have that if the option was available. Now that's one of the things that I think the zoning thing would help with. But I didn't know that, I, I see that occasionally we've got affordable with a capital A, which to me means subsidized, funded, designed for people with certain income levels. But we talked at the beginning about market level, and I think every home is market level and affordable to somebody. But if we don't have those, you know, what's commonly referred to as missing middle housing options available in a community, then the people who want to transition from an apartment to a single-family home aren't going to find it if those options aren't there for them. And they're going to stay in apartments and compete with other apartment rentals and drive up apartment rents up. So I'd sure like to see us also focus a little bit on what we do for, you know, there, I don't look at a, a street like Arlington and see older homes that are probably ready to be torn down, and you replace one of those with another very large, single-family home that's going to cost five hundred thousand dollars? Or can you replace it with two or three row houses that look compatible with everything else in the community and still, and provide homes for three families instead of one?
You know, there's a, a real question about who are the rent burdened people in our community? Is it all just outline stuff, apartments along the river, or is it in Old Town, in the R five zone? That's the part I want to know, and I think that'll help us to find, you know, find our way to a solution about who is rent burdened. We don't really know. I don't. And, you know, Mayor?
So this is a great conversation, I'm glad that you all are here, but I sit back here thinking that I think maybe we're having the wrong conversation, because I appreciate you being a great long-term solution, but when and where are we going to have the discussion of those people who are severely rent burdened today? And how tomorrow will, if they lose their job or they have huge medical bills, they're going to be a homeless one? So when do we have that conversation? That's the one that I'm seeing right now, that I've been waiting for Wednesday, I haven't had a phone call back on that issue. Still haven't had a phone call back. Anybody?
I have a question. Does anybody know how many, I'm not sure how you measure the housing, whether it's by bedrooms or front doors. How many affordable housing units do we currently have in Gladstone? Does anybody know?
That's a good question.
I'm sure they'll be addressing that as part of the housing needs analysis.
And I think that's part of the concern, because Gladstone hasn't really done that inventory before. And so finding out who is the severely rent burdened, what is our current inventory, and where should we be addressing it, I think is just so timely for us to have that now.
Another question would be, we always see the example, golly, my income's a thousand dollars a month and my rent's eight hundred, and I can't live. But a, a bigger question is, how many of those situations are where there's two income earners or two retirees, you've got two people living there, and even after that, where are they at? I mean, if you've got two folks that are on a limited income, and their rent's at eight hundred dollars, and together they've got, you know, twenty-two hundred bucks a month, they're better off than the examples we've heard, but how do we help them? And, and we're back to that middle question, because all of this money's coming from people that produce income. All of the Metro Bond money, I don't need to remind us all, isn't coming out of thin air. So how it's used and how we go about this is really, really critical. So there's a lot of fiscal decisions that we don't have the information to base any decisions on, and that's a conversation down the road. But we're talking about affordability here, and yet there's so many more factors that come into this. And without more questions answered, we could get up here and, and talk for days on end and not make much progress. I appreciate your response.
Thank you. I just wanted to share that there are a lot of requirements and goals that the Metro Bond Funds have associated with them. Forty percent of the dollars do have to serve households that are at zero to thirty percent, the lowest income folks, but there is no way they could ever participate in the market. They are the folks that you're talking about, but one thing, one job loss, one, you know, person that gets paid for a car that breaks down, and they're, they're homeless. But, you know, we need shelters in this county, we don't have any shelters, we've got two that are under construction, they're both family shelters, we don't have a single shelter that's for singles, the folks have nowhere to go. Unfortunately, I would prefer not to spend money on shelters, I'd rather, you know, that we have housing, but the situation is such that we have to have somewhere for our neighbors to be safe, so they're not freezing to death in the cold. The county commissioners just, they just allocated one point two million dollars towards an affordable housing and services fund. I'm overseeing that process right now. We put an R S P out into the community. We don't have a whole ton of nonprofit providers in our community, unfortunately. Really trying to draw more in, I think the more community that we have working on these problems, the better. This should not be a government-only thing, this needs to be everybody. We had several applications, I think there were seventeen total, they're going to be scored in the coming couple of weeks, and we're going to be taking recommendations to the commissioners in January. Many of those applications were community members, churches, people that want to help with safety off the street type options, things that people who are homeless or people that are right on the brink of homelessness can be helped until we can actually get housing for them. So we're, we're taking little steps with this, but it's not enough. I could go on, and I'll be back in February with more information.
I think, not I think, I, clearly this looks like it's a three-tiered situation, where we need to look at what our immediate needs are, and intermediate situation, and then what the long term's going to be for all of our affordable housing. And there's a lot of options, but we need to probably really sit down and figure out what this process is going to be, and set the definitions and the levels so that we can clearly help people instead of just keep talking about it. So, because I do think we need something for the immediate, and there needs to be steps of what we can do and how we can help them, because we want to see our citizens be able to stay in our community, or any community for that matter. But there needs to be some real brainstorming on this one, and three-tier, a three-tier process.
Kevin?
Oregon Housing and Community Services Department.
I think some of it was census, wasn't it?
Well, in here, it says where it came from.
Yeah, most of it cited.
The numbers of the data that's going to be out there, we're going to be able to give more data, method data, pretty valuable. There's other data about our very city and about the median rent prices in our city is available on CityBurb, so there's data out there. But I have a question, I mean, I think one of the things that, I agree with Count for Bill, I think we need to really take a look at our zoning. But we, you know, and the ADU especially, we're at four hundred and seventeen square feet, and honestly, it's not really worth the, the time and effort to build an ADU at four hundred and seventeen square feet. Secondly, one of the questions I have with you folks is, I was wondering to myself whether or not for-profit investors would either, and I just pulled up a National Real Estate Investment article in March, that says for-profit investors actually kind of like affordable housing, and could, and could, and it looked really good. So my question is, all of the not-for-profits and the folks in the government, are they going out to risk these for-profit investors to be able to put taxes together, coming with the financial taxes, or is it to, was it lesser or a random point, is it going to be on back-to-back deals?
I can, I can speak to the bond sellers.
Yeah.
There is an intention to have for-profits and nonprofits compete for a large percentage of developers in the county. We have to go through a process with our community over the next several months, and we want to hear from you about what you want, what you need, what you want to happen, people's like. We'll be going from city to city talking about that, but we'll be opening up the access and there's no limit of the for-profit or non-profit.
But the for-profit investors will be either match for, match plus, correct? So it's not just going to be a for-profit investment group getting tax dollars?
I can speak for what they agree.
That's the, that's the difference between a for-profit investor going, you know, building an investment package, bringing in more of a bunch of investors and building affordable housing.
I understand that. And I understand that.
I understand that.
It's usually a long, long period.
But I have citizens that are talking to me about how much they're being backed for two point water, would they have to pay for another bond? And I know my whole thing.
Can't do it.
There's a hole.
A house. Just about there.
What I'm saying is that private developers are going to go after the very exact same subsidies that we go after, they're not going to put their own money in a for-profit housing program.
Well, that article said differently, so, I mean.
We're not seeing, look, if, if this could be solved by private developers, it would be solved.
Be done.
I, I agree with you, you're probably disagree. When you have money on the table that's free or cheap money, you're going to take advantage of it whether you're a private developer or a not-for-profit, your profit, for-profit developer or not-for-profit. You want to go from the, the lower stage to the, to the high end. That's why the tax credit program is protected, that's where, that's where private developers get.
It's open session.
The people are, he doesn't, it depends on the score, okay? There's a nine percent tax credit for sure, it's a really deep subsidy to the table. And then there's a four percent tax credit program that we can blend with bonds, not competitive. You have to blend that with bond cap, et cetera, so that becomes a state, at a state level. We certainly could use more private developers, you doing.
Coming in with you, though, right? Bringing money to you, we can get a lot of, of sure way to build that.
It's not the seven and a half, three and a six percent return, if people are comfortable with a three, three and a half percent return. And there is a developer in town who's modeling that, actually. But that's, you know, that's kind of the return that they'll get, they won't get the full return, you know, that they can get at the higher rate in the market right now. Now, what we are seeing is flattening of the higher rate units right now. So when you look at the permit, the whole, the Portland metro area, you're not seeing the highest end, you know. So that has plateaued, so there is more advertising investment by private developers in, you know, the next tier down.
And you guys would be in a position of possibly working with the developers.
Just about there.
What I'm saying is that private developers are going to go after the very exact same subsidies that we go after. They're not going to put their own money in a for-profit housing.
Well, that's what our folks said different, so, I mean.
We're not seeing, look, if this could be solved by private developers, it would be solved.
Be done.
I agree with you, you're probably disagree. When you have money on the table that's free or cheap money, you're going to take advantage of it whether you're a private developer or a non-profit, your for-profit developer or non-profit. You want to go from the lowest age to the highest, right? That's why tax credit program is protected, that's where private developers.
It's open session.
It depends on the score. There's a nine percent tax credit for sure, which is very, 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 really deep subsidies to the table. And then there's a four percent tax credit program that we can blend with bonds, not competitive. You have to blend that with bond cap, et cetera, so that becomes a state, at a state level. We certainly could use more private developers.
Coming in with you, though, right? Bringing money to you, we can get a balance, or we can go with a tax credit.
It's not a seven and a half, three and a six percent return, if people are comfortable with a three, three and a half percent return. And there is a developer in town who's modeling that, actually. But that's kind of the return that they'll get. They won't get the full return, you know, that they can get at the higher rate of market right now. Now, what we are seeing is flattening of the higher rate units right now. So when you look at the permit area, the corporate metro area, you're not seeing the highest end, you know. So that has plateaued. So there is more appetite in investment by private developers in, you know, the next tier down.
And you guys would be in a position of possibly working with the developer group, or would that group be able to always move?
Absolutely, it may be okay with a three and a half percent return or something. Or we do a mixed unit project. We've got some of the market rate units that get them their cap rate, and we do the market rate units that call blended in.
So I have a question. So according to your information, Clay, you have about twenty percent at River Glen that are rent burdened, which twenty, twenty-five people probably, right? And that still leaves us like six hundred people in the area that we know nothing about. How are we going to find out who they are and what information are we going to try to find out?
I don't have the answer for that, or I don't know if we need to know who they are.
Well, I don't need necessarily specific people, but what information do we need and how do we get it?
We did reach out to those targeted areas and invite them here to that meeting tonight, specifically what I told you. A lot of that, I think, is going to be flushed out through the housing needs analysis that we're doing. I don't know, though, if we need to know specifically who they are, but we can work with the county to understand that better if that's an objective.
I don't think we need to know specific people, no, but we need to know some demographics.
Yeah, we need to know demographics.
You know, seniors that are retired, are we talking about people who are commuting to downtown Portland to work, like?
That is what the housing needs analysis that the county's doing and the piece that Gladstone's doing. That's the kind of information that we are going to capture through that.
And that's when?
June 2019. And I don't know if it's going to get to the level of specificity of where the rent burden population works or how much they commute. I don't know if they have, you know, if that's built into their funding.
I bring that up because some of the suggestions in here are directly related to that, right? If we're going to reduce parking, then it should not be people who are driving downtown Portland every day for work.
Right, understandable.
And if it's June, what are we doing, how are we going to do anything today if we don't know who are helping until June?
I think the point of today was to have the conversation and recognize publicly that Gladstone has an issue and that we need to be providing good information to our elected officials because it's going to take some policy changes. So we're not going to fix this today. We're not going to fix it in a year, but I think that was the intent of tonight is to say, we realize we have a problem and we need to understand what's the best way to start addressing these.
We need to start working on it, yeah.
So I think in the short term, at least from the planning perspective, one thing we can get on our schedule is to discuss where we are with the ADUs and our code and what we can or should or shouldn't do with those.
And that's part of the money we're going to have to do the code audit.
So the consultant will be looking at that specifically as part of the audit process, and it will be covered in their kind of final recommendation. I will be working with them and managing that.
Regarding revising our codes for ADUs?
For ADUs, for the parking requirement for ADUs, the size limitation on ADUs, setback reductions for ADUs, all of those kind of strategies. And that's where kind of community involvement engagement really is key because it can be controversial. Some of, you know, removing some of those barriers to development, and the neighbors might not always like that. So kind of educating the community and bringing all of the different people and opinions to the table, it can be really helpful before we get to the code kind of adoption and approval stage for any changes.
One of the other things on this, too, I think, is what Minneapolis just did and what Portland seems to be doing and what the House proposal for all cities, about ten thousand in Oregon, is to allow duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes to be constructed on what have been single-family law in zoning areas. And I know we would get a lot of community kickback, or, or, or back, something like that. I wasn't here two decades ago, whenever it was, when people tried to get duplexes banned in much of the community. Part of the reason for that, I think, is that we have a notion of what a duplex is and what a triplex would look like and the kind of people that would live there. And I think truly one of the helpful things you did was you shared some examples of construction that was compatible and even attractive and had curb appeal. And I think if we could find, you know, examples of cottage clusters and duplex, over-unders or whatever that had, you know, a curb appeal that we fit in and be compatible with these existing homes, it might ease some of the opposition in the community to having those types of homes. And the more pictures, the more photos, the more slide shows we could do where people look at that and say, hey, I wouldn't mind living in a place that looked like that. I think that serves the community well and, you know, dispels some of the negative tensions that, you know, you have to fight against just to even have a discussion.
I would, I would just in closing say that I've been a fan, such as it is, of ADUs for years. I remember in 1996, Mayor Katz in Portland, this was a big issue. Some of you that have been around have probably heard the stories. And, oh, we cannot have this, this is problematic, we will not have this in Portland. And now the economic reality has caught up and it's suddenly in favor. I'm really not here to criticize that as much as to say that it's real difficult to have a crystal ball, even in today's world, and that we're going to have to be real careful with what we do with ADUs because we're talking about the environment, we're talking about our parks, our trees, and we're also at the same time talking about infill. And when you start building more ADUs and duplexes, you don't have any room for trees. So you're right to say that this, this could get testy, but without a good community input and without the citizens understanding what's going on, we'll end up fretting about this until the end of time. God knows how long it took to come up with a membrane structure ordinance. And I don't say that as a complaint, I say that, that the reason I bring that up is it tells you what we're up against. We're going far beyond dealing with little neighborhood issues. We're changing the structure of our community, we're changing zoning, we're trying to change a lot of things in this community and in the region. Some of it's going to work great and some of it might come back and bite us, so I just recommend that we're real careful. Let the public know what's going on, or they'll be down here with knives and pitchforks. Thank you.
They will be anyway.
So, affordable housing, which is used a lot, and in that term, you mean a number of things like Councilor Milch pointed out. So what we're really talking about in this conversation is lower income, from what I understand. I'm just wondering why we don't differentiate between them because, in an planning commission meeting, somebody was trying to get the places over on, Glenn Echo Rezoned, and part of the criteria that they met to the affordable housing definition, criteria like that, and these five hundred, six hundred, hundred thousand dollar houses, which is unaffordable for most of us. So the term seems to mean a lot of things, so why in this are we not using the term well, as we collect now?
So we actually brought this up during the last planning commission meeting, and maybe, Clay, could you explain what you said last month about the term and how it's being applied on the River Glen complex?
Yeah, so, and somebody mentioned if you're capital A affordable, that would be actually, you know, we have set guidelines by HUD that folks that are typically, if eighty percent of area median income is below, most of our properties are serving sixty percent or even thirty percent. So that would, that would be your capital A legal affordable definition. Where it gets a little trickier is, you know, from, like you mentioned, from affordability around, well, somebody makes a million dollars, thirty percent of their income, you know, and buys, you know, three hundred thousand dollars every year, that's affordable to them. And so I think it's a good differentiation to make and, you know, something to note that you should go to that legal definition of affordability and also look at that, you know, thirty percent cost of income or kind of overlay those, you know, those eighty, sixty, thirty percent A mine numbers, look at that, thirty percent rent burden, and realize really quick how little, you know, a lot of the challenges exist.
So I would recommend that for this discussion and as well as any of the meetings we do as follow-ups, and I think there was also a recommendation in here that we had some committees put together that we use that HUD definition so there's no confusion about what we're talking about.
Because they're, you know, like, let me ask you this, if somebody was to say, well, isn't affordable housing the same as Section Eight? What would be your definition?
Yeah, and if not the case, oh, we have to do an affordable element, that adds nothing to what Section Eight over, and you could like speak more to this. You know, Section Eight is vouchers that are either attached, project-based, so actually attached to a physical unit, or affordable voucher that a family will apply for, and then they can take that out to either, you know, a market rate apartment or to affordable housing complex and casket and stuff.
So I can just add a tiny bit to that. Section Eight, for the most part, is just a subsidy form, it's a form of subsidy. And tax credits are a form of subsidy. Any kind of affordable housing with a capital A of serving low-income people, which we should buy, there's low-income people, they're very low and extremely low. That's how heads define this.
Okay.
And in order for somebody to be able to live in one of those beautiful units, they showed pictures of, to keep the rent low enough for them to afford it, there's got to be subsidy. There's no other way to do it. So we're talking about subsidized in some form, and vouchers just one form of subsidy.
I appreciate you bringing up, you know, the Section Eight, that word gets, and that term gets thrown around, it's a very dirty word.
It does.
Section, people that live in Section Eight housing. And see, I appreciate you all, Commissioner, looking to actually get the real definition of what those words, kind of unloading some of the baggage.
I was, when I went to look at the property before the last meeting, I spent time driving through there and walking around and looking at the fact that it's extremely well-maintained. You didn't see sketchy people wandering around. It actually looked like, it looked better than the apartment complex I lived in for twenty-three years. And I was impressed by that, and I thought, wow, the fact that they actually have someone there. When you did your presentation, you were talking about someone that actually helps people when they get into crisis situations. And I think that's an important factor if you're going to have affordable housing is that it is related with all the services that can help people, too. So.
I'd like to tag on to Commissioner Milch's comment about housing falling into disrepair in various parts of the city. And I'm wondering if an organization like Habitat for Humanity may not need a seat at the table here, or I'll ask the professionals, are there any other organizations that should have a seat at the table at this conversation? You guys are great, but are there other organizations that would contribute to alleviating the housing problem in Gladstone that ought to be included?
You're talking about rapid, you know, rapid response, the more multifamily housing folks you have at the table, the better. The housing authority is here, they've got a developer who's formerly at some of the housing alternatives, very creative, great developers, affordable companies. Habitat certainly could be as capable, still could, Proud Brown, which is a new land trust, and the land trust model and other tools could be about to be considered, really with the sustainability of those two. Phil, you, you mind?
There's a thought that's in my mind right now, that the intent of doing the bond funding starts flowing through the county, that there will be IFCs and we'll be inviting those folks to be at the table.
The other thing that I recognize, we need to be always saying, you know, the for-profit developers and to say, hey, if we're going to tackle this middle housing, if we're going to do rezoning, so what's going to be the plan, for the cottage complexes, what sort of events and what kind of things could we do to make it easier for you to develop? Because right now, it's hard to develop, the cost is really high.
Yep.
And so if you're going to incentivize the private market to build the tiny housing that you're talking about, you've got to be ready to give something, right? There's some giving space. And your private for-profit developers are going to be in the best position to say, okay, this fee is really hard for us, or this SDC, or if you give this incentive to create this middle housing, that would really get us to the table.
And I've heard recently that one of the suggestions along that line, this city spent a lot of time in recent years finally getting SDCs in place of living in here. So now that we have them, you know, to talk about using them as, as we said, that by foregoing them, you know, it's a little hard. But what I've understood is that at some point, not required to be paid at the beginning, but to wait until actual, you know, occupation approval has been given before they, before they are paid, is one thing that could help the developers.
And you can talk with the for-profit developers about that, it doesn't really help us with affordable housing, because you have to pay, you know, whether it's at the beginning or occupancy, it doesn't matter for us to add to our bottom line, you have to add to that. So really, just figure out what we're willing to raise for us, you know, really not the other thing. But if you're going to incentivize housing, you need to find a way to give a little bit in order to support people.
DLCD staff ran a session on this subject at the planning conference this year in Bend. They showed statistics and data from communities that had reduced SDC fees to accommodate or promote ADU development in particular, and they showed that it didn't really help that much as much as communities that reduced setbacks, for instance, or increased kind of the development potential or made it affordable in other ways. So I think there's a suite of strategies that they're going to be looking at for the code audit, taking those new statistics into consideration.
And to be honest, when they come before us, the SDCs are never something that they complain about. It's setbacks, it's the amount of landscaping, the amount of parking, those are the things they complain about.
And the more we run out of land, the more pressure there is. It's just a reality. We're, you know, experiencing a land shortage. We don't have time to discuss the UGB or whose fault it is. I think it's all George Bush's fault back there somewhere. But, but, yeah, with the, just the pressure on the environment and the trees and things and the trade-offs that I mentioned earlier, and the fact that we're growing like mad, it's here and we need to deal with it. On a number of occasions, I've heard folks say, well, we're planning for something, nothing's ever happened, nothing ever will. That is complete nonsense.
It is.
Reality is at our doorstep and things are changing and all of the, all of the infill that's occurring and all the pressures that are at our doorstep are not going to go away. So the idea that we're planning for something that won't happen, I think is outdated. I think things are going to happen and the decisions we make are going to have a big effect on what it costs to live here and who can afford to be here. It's, you know, it's just a high-pressured situation. And one thing that's really clear is everybody is feeling the high cost of homeownership, even if you own your home. And so we've got to act, and we can't pretend that we got all the answers or that we're going to fix it for everybody, or we'll fix it for no one.
I see Bob Stewart, our school superintendent's in the back, and I wonder if Mr. Stewart had any comments on how the homeless situation may affect our schools?
Well, I could comment not just on the homeless situation, but in general, what's happened with student population over the last few years. So I've been in the district a long time. And in my time in the district, there was always some thresholds we used for entering kindergarten kids as to how many we would anticipate were coming in through the forecast enrollment out over time. And that varied between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and forty kids every year we could count on coming from Gladstone, entering kindergarten, when they turn five years of age. The most recent, a hundred and forty number was in 2013, fourteen, where we had a hundred and forty kids. We also bring a lot of kids in from outside of our school district, non-resident kids, and that happened for a very long time, year two. And, but in the last three years, there's been a very dramatic change in our student population and the number of kids we have in school. And our in-district enrollment, kids that live within the boundaries of Gladstone School District in around thirty months, has declined by fifteen percent. The most common story we hear from families is that it's about